Works in transportation pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Any attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. Please call the roll.
Councilor Stephen Kamara?
Here.
Councilor Joseph Kamara?
Here.
Chairman DeBarris?
Here. Item number one is citizens' input. Is there anyone wishing to come down and speak? If it's anything specific to the items on the agenda, we'll also have you come down at that time. Okay. Item number two, communication, city resident regarding Serta bus service to Boston hospitals. I anticipate some lengthy discussion on this. It's the council's will to...
May we also take that out of order and go with number either three or four next?
So motion to take items three out of order.
Second.
Second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Take item number three, order curb removal for Robert Plurth and Carrie Jaraback, 1030 High Street, total of 39 feet at 1030 High Street. This was referred back on April 11th. Do we have any of the proponents here to speak on this curb cut? Come on, Joe.
No, we're gonna take that later. We're doing a curb cut right first.
All right, just please state your name and address for the record.
There's a switch. Just make sure it's towards you. There you go.
Jason Jaraback, 1030 High Street. I have pictures. I just wanted to pass around. Right now, the house is vacant. We're going through the...
Try to speak into my microphone, please.
Right now, the house is vacant, and we're going through the house. So nobody's living there right now. Soon as the plumber gets out, we are gonna be moving in. And there's three vehicles. And as you can see, I have a big truck. And if the truck sits on the street, it's gonna take up more than one parking spot. So if we put the driveway in, we can take two vehicles off the street, which would be better for plows and parking. Right in front of the house, I got with engineering, and they said it's not a parking spot there. So nobody is supposed to be parking there. There was a sign years ago that got removed, and it never got put back up. So that's why I'd like to have the driveway put in on the side of the house, so I can put the truck and a car. Like I said, it would eliminate any cluster.
Okay. Any questions from the committee?
The photo that you're showing us here, this is...is this the property?
That's my truck, yeah.
That's just your truck?
Yep.
But this is where you'd want the driveway, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay. And that's on the...
That's on the High Street side.
South side?
Yes.
South side of your building. Is there also a driveway on the...
There's a garage there. There's not a driveway. I can't park anything there. I'd already gotten spoken to by the police, because it hangs off into the sidewalk. And any vehicle that hangs into the sidewalk, you get a ticket.
Okay, so there isn't a driveway that goes behind the house?
Nope.
But there is a...I see a slight incline there on the curbing.
Right, that's a walkway. That's the end of the street.
That's the end of the street?
Yeah, that's a walkway, a crosswalk right there.
Okay. And you're suggesting that this is not considered an official parking space?
When I went to engineering, that's what they told me, yes. There was actually signs there, and he looked it up, and that's not a legitimate parking spot there. Because it goes too close to the guy's driveway in the back, and then it also goes to the walkway.
I did drive by, and I thought I...maybe I looked at the wrong house, because I saw a driveway on both sides of the...one side on the north side of the house, so that wasn't your house.
Yeah, there's no driveway. There's a two-car garage there, which I can't fit the truck into. So the truck would be on the street regardless, and that truck's gonna take up more than one spot.
I guess I was looking at the wrong place, because what I looked at had a driveway and parking behind the house.
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
Mr. Frye is here. Do you want to come down and...
If you sit close to Mr. Kamara, this will reach him.
Good afternoon. JR Frye, City Engineer. If I may, maybe there needs to be a little clarity about language. In terms of the ordinance, what is on President Ave is a driveway. It's a curb-cut opening.
On High Street?
It's on High...no, on President Avenue.
Okay.
So the house is on the corner. There's High Street on the one side, President Ave on the other. And there's a two-car-wide opening on President Avenue currently that goes to the garage. And he's right, to the extent that there...if the garage is utilized for things other than vehicles, and you can't park a vehicle in it, there's not room...the way the garage is situated, there's not room to park a car in front of it. He'd be hanging into the sidewalk. So there's that piece. As for putting a driveway, or whether or not somebody can legally park in front of the house on the High Street side, there's no restriction on how close a driveway can be to somebody parking. So the only significant restriction would be from the corner, you have to be 20 feet away from the corner. So whether a car could fit there is perhaps a separate question. Initially, when we looked at it, it would appear that one parking space, one on-street parking space would be removed.
If you are saying 20 feet from the corner back, that there's supposed to be no vehicle, then there is no vehicle that is possibly gonna fit there. Because that's...you've got the crosswalk that's there, and I don't know how far back you have to be from the crosswalk, but there's only maybe two feet, and then the end of the street is right there.
There isn't a specific restriction on where the crosswalk is. It's 20 feet from the street. But if the house has approximately 50-foot of frontage, then there would be 30 feet for someone to park after the 20 feet behind the right-of-way.
Not with the crosswalk there?
No.
Can't block the crosswalk?
But I don't think...
He's telling you that the...
I don't think the crosswalk is outside the 20 feet. I could be wrong, but I don't believe it is.
If you go from the corner, like you're saying, that's how I'm perceiving it anyway, 20 feet back from the corner, you're supposed to have nothing there? There's no spot for that car to fit there, because you're gonna have the other person's driveway there also. So worst-case scenario, even if you eliminated one spot, that truck's gonna take up two spots, and my car's gonna take up another spot. So now you're looking at three spots.
Yep. That's the...that's what's before the council.
Thank you. So, yeah, I think that...
Is there any objectors?
Is there any objectors here?
Hello. Terrence Sullivan, resident of 1010 High Street. So I'm here as a resident today, not as a city worker. And I have three residents from 1015 High Street with me as well. So we filed a number of petitions in opposition to the curb cut. Parking on High Street is extremely difficult already. The owners have a curb cut on President Avenue with a two-stall garage. The garage is in poor shape. Actually, the house is in very poor shape. When there's parking bans in the winter, many of the neighbors now already have to park on President Avenue, because there's not enough room. So we just don't think it's fair that they get an additional curb cut. And they will be taking a parking place away on High Street. The tiny driveway you saw is a handicap-accessible cut on the sidewalk. There are two cars parked there now, the first one being 20 feet away from the actual corner where it intersects on President Avenue. So there will be a parking spot lost, and the owners already have a long curb cut on President Avenue with a two-stall garage. I have some photos, if you need to see them as well.
I do, and there's also cars in the garage right now. I also have two race cars that are in the garage. The garage is full, and along with three other vehicles, they're gonna go on the street. If the curb cut doesn't go in, that's three more spots that are gonna be lost on the street regardless, because when we move into the house, it's gonna be there. And as you can see, that truck takes up one. Then I have another vehicle that I drive to Boston every day with, and then my wife's vehicle. So there's definitely...
So the pictures I'm showing, one is of the garage. And about three years ago, somebody was doing work in the garage, and this is against the wall. All the car parts that have been left there for several years. I have been...I've been cleaning out in front of the house, and cutting the grass, and picking up the trash, because it's just been unsightly for the neighborhood.
See what else you got.
So the other two pictures I have are just showing the curb cut they're asking for is actually where this old stockade fence is. And you can see there are two cars parked there now. To that side of the picture, you see the WC. That's the wheelchair accessible point on the sidewalk, and then it moves down to the corner. It's just...some of the houses, like 1015, it's a two-family house. They have no driveway. The house just up from them is a three-family house with no driveway, and parking historically has been horrible on High Street. I'm fortunate. I do have driveway and parking area in back, but many of the neighbors just don't have any room, and it's extremely difficult out there. And we just don't find it fair that they already have a big cut on President Avenue, and now they want another one on High Street as well.
So you don't think that the curb cut request now is gonna alleviate the parking?
It's gonna take away one more parking spot.
Did you just take a look at the size of the truck that I have? That truck's gonna take up two spots alone. Now add two more vehicles, that's four. It's definitely gonna alleviate parking. Now, with the garage there, there's vehicles in the garage. I can't...I mean, I purchased the house. We just purchased this house in...it might have been three months ago or four months ago. I have licensed plumbers going in there. I have licensed electricians going in there, doing all the work. All the cities, they have the permits pulled. I'm just trying to get in there so I can continue on.
Counselor.
Is it a single-family home?
It is.
Are you planning to live there?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's why I'm saying, if...actually, if you look at the two cars that are there, I don't even have to look at the pictures, but where that, he's saying, is a wheelchair ramp. From there to the corner, like the engineer was saying, there's not 20 feet. So if you go 20 feet back, that car's illegally parked, the first one.
Okay, I have no further questions.
So currently, there's no one living in that property now?
No.
Was there someone else who'd like to speak on that, on this matter?
And there is...I got one more thing.
Yeah.
There is also, the street is gonna be tarred soon. So if this doesn't go through, then there's a five-year wait for this to go through again. And I mean, if it doesn't go through, there's technically four vehicles that are gonna be on the street. So that's gonna take up a lot more space.
So you have six vehicles, four vehicles on the street, and two in the garage?
There's three. I have two in the garage, and there's three vehicles that I have. I have my truck, which is like two vehicles, if you look at the size of it. And then there's two more vehicles that I have.
Just one last question to the clerk. The petition that was submitted, I just wondered if the...how many people are on the petition? Are they predominantly people that live in the neighborhood?
The petitions? Yeah, they were from the neighborhood. There were, I believe, 21 in total.
21, yes.
And then there was one in on this letter.
And I understand that there might be 21 people, or however many there is, but I'm not sure that they understand the size of the vehicle I have that'll be on the street, and eliminating one spot would actually...it would gain. Because putting all those vehicles on the street, the neighborhood's gonna lose out.
Are you...
When are you gonna move in?
Hopefully, like, two months.
When is the shooting gonna be paid?
Binds are down now, so I would expect by the end of the summer, after they do the sidewalk work.
I got a letter, and it said...
The final cut would go on.
The end of April, or the beginning of...I mean, the middle of April.
I thought I saw...might have seen another hand go up to come down and speak. Go ahead. Come on, you come down. Just say your name and address for the record, please.
Michaela DeBarris, 1015 High Street. I just wanted to say, like, preferably how he mentioned that there's no parking spots really on High Street. Sometimes, when I, like, leave and come back home, it's late at night, and I don't like the fact of parking on President Ave, because I have no parking spots on the street. So like, to me, it's kinda like a safety thing, too. I just don't really agree with it. I'm only 19, and I shouldn't have to park on President Ave. So that's just how I feel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a driveway on your lot?
I don't.
Do you own the house? Does your family own the house?
I don't, but my grandmother does, right over there.
Is there room for off-street parking or driveway?
Um, no.
They are retaining a wall in front, and there's no room on the side.
All right, I yield.
Thank you. Detain a motion this time? There's a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I made that motion. When you live there, if the residents see that what you're saying is accurate, if you buy five more cars and there's a lot less parking, then maybe something's gonna have to change. If they're willing to do it with you, then we'll change it later. Right now, I just don't see the reason to do it.
I understand that.
Thank you.
You know, when I leave there in two months, then I gotta go through this whole process again.
We all have to do that whole process again, if they want...
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you still have the pictures?
I'm gonna need it for the record. Do you want...I can make copies if you want.
No, that's fine. I can get more copies.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you want to take item number four out of order as well?
I don't mind, except I know that the Serta executive director was on a short timeframe also. This should be quick.
Okay.
Okay, take item four out of order.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number four, curb removal for Carl R. Machado, trustee 205 High Street. Any proponents? Any proponents for this item? Any opponents?
And this one here, if I may?
Yeah.
I don't know if it was incorrectly posted, incorrectly presented to the city. And I don't know technically, and we have no legal counsel here that can advise us on it. But it is specifically mentioning the wrong direction on the north side of the property facing Bank Street. I'm sorry.
Say what?
Oh, JR, okay.
57 Oak, if I'm not mistaken, is the corner of Oak and Bank Street. It is the southeast corner. So the north side of the property does face Bank Street, which it happens to be the south side of Bank Street.
So you're saying this says correctly where it's...
I believe it is.
Okay, we have no objections. There were no objections. Just a little bit unclear of the wording, but I'll move to approve.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number two, communication, city resident regarding Serta bus service to Boston hospitals. Anybody here to speak on this matter may come down at this time? Yes, please.
They can share my mic, and they can share that mic. That can be for them. Save that for them.
If you wouldn't mind just going around, saying your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. So my name is Sabrina Davis. I'm a resident on 196 Irving Street. I'm also an organizer with the Coalition for Social Justice on Transit.
Eric Rousseau with the Southeastern Regional Transit Authority, are operating bus service in both New Bedford and Fall River.
Angie Constantino. I'm a transportation planner at Serpide, Southeastern Regional Planning.
Ray Haig, Director of Veteran Services, City of Fall River.
I'm Abel Perez from Swansea.
Thank you. Open up to any questions from the committee?
Well, as you know, this letter was written by Abel to us, Mr. Perez. And I thought it was a significant issue, one that we should take a look at. On the radio this morning, I had heard mentioned that Mr. Perez was a veteran. So I, late this afternoon, asked Veterans Agent Haig to be present. I have since learned that Mr. Perez is not a veteran, but the transportation that Mr. Haig provides to his office may be relevant in the larger conversation. Also, as a result of this resolution that has this here before, I had reached out to Serta and Serpide, hence Mr. Rousseau and Ms. Constantino, both of whom I had spoken to, and also Sabrina, although she mentioned Coalition for Social Justice, there also is a group, Bus Riders United.
We have that. We hold that organization now.
Under CSJ.
Yes.
So Bus Riders United are interested in improved transportation in the South Coast. So that's just background onto why these people were highlighted as being important to the conversation. So I think it's probably appropriate for Mr. Perez to present the problem, and then maybe somewhere on the side of the table, we can present the solution.
Very good. Mr. Perez?
Yes, I want to start with a brief summary of my personal experience of getting transportation to Boston hospitals. I want to thank you for inviting me to be here to share my thoughts and views. Basically, I want to discuss the lack of transportation available to the South Coast community to Boston-area hospitals. There are few available opportunities for medical patients unable to transport themselves to medical appointments in Boston. I myself, although I used to drive to Boston myself, I no longer do so due to anxiety issues. As far as I know, the Serta bus shuttle service from Fall River on Thursday, and there's also another one that departs from Newport on Tuesdays, they leave at 8:30 in the morning. And...but you can't book a doctor's appointment before 11:00 in the morning. And the appointment, once you get to Boston, has to be complete by 2:00 PM. So that's a three-hour window to go through your appointments in Boston hospitals. And typically, Boston hospitals require their patients to spend more than three hours at the hospital undergoing testing, whatever it might be. Okay. The only other transportation that I know of is the Greater Adabo-Totten Regional Transit Authority that offers rides to individuals from the South Coast. But you have to be enrolled in mass health, and you have to meet another qualifying criteria to qualify for that ride on the South Coast to Boston hospitals. The other alternative that I found to getting transported to Boston was the American Cancer Society. The American Cancer Society budgets 500...they have a program called Road to Recovery, and they budget $500 per year for the cancer patient's medical transportation needs. That's fine. That's great, if your medical appointments are nearby. But when they booked my appointments with Uber for a round trip to Boston and back to Fall River, well, actually, to where I live in Swansea, it costs the Cancer Society over $200 per trip. So the $500 budget is depleted in only two or three trips per year to Boston. And I've got another issue with the American Cancer Society. I'm not gonna make an issue of it here, but I thought that maybe they could allocate vouchers for passengers to use Peter Pan bus and cut their cost in half. Instead of paying over $200, a person can do it for about $60 per trip, which you can get maybe nine, 10 trips out of $500 per year. But anyway, I'm going a little bit ahead of myself. Well, nearly a year, I've been transporting myself to Dana Faba and Burgundy Women's Hospital through Peter Pan bus services. Every trip I take with Peter Pan, from Fall River to Boston, back to Fall River, and including the taxi service to drive me from South Station to the hospital, and from the hospital back to South Station, costs an average of $125 per round trip. Currently, I go to Dana Faba once a month, but sometimes hospitals schedule two, three, four appointments per month. So you multiply 125, they say, by four, now you're spending $500 a month on transportation to Boston, which I still think is true of you when you consider that, you know, they're saving So basically, what I'm saying is, if a patient is told by their oncologist, for example, I'm using myself as an example. My oncologist told me last summer, there was nothing much more she can do for me, other than treat me with chemotherapy, which she said was being ineffective. And she gave me the option, either of, you're gonna have to eventually enter hospice and die, or go to Dana Faba. Fortunately, I applied at Dana Faba, and they admitted me into a clinical trial. And the clinical trial has been working beautifully. It has reduced my tumor drastically in my right lung and in my lymph nodes. Fortunately, the logistics of getting to Boston from my home was the biggest problem I had. I was trying to figure, how am I gonna get to Boston, and this and that? I was trying to figure, how am I going to get to Boston and this and that? And fortunately, I'm able to afford my ride to Boston. But that's not the case with other people. Other people don't have the resources to travel to Boston. And if given a choice like the doctor gave me last summer, they're going to, they're destined to die. Because those services in Boston, those elite hospitals, are not available in the South community, South Coast. So, if you're given that choice and you can't get to Boston, guess what? Soon, you're going to meet a dismal fate sooner or later.
Go to Council of Mayor.
So, talking to Serta and the other enterprise leaders in council, can we expand the services there? Can we make it, obviously, four-hour window is not enough time for, like as mentioned, for a patient to see a doctor. And is there any way possible to expand it to later in the day, maybe eight hours?
It always comes down to a question of resources. When we started this service, there were three COAs that were trying to rotate around amongst themselves and take on the burden to operate from the South Coast. To bring the residents from the South Coast up to the Boston hospitals in general. And it was, the fare was forty dollars round trip. We had an opportunity to use what was considered new freedom funding, which was a federal grant, to sort of take that model and expand it to allow for there to be about nine trips a month. One, doing it from each city once a week, essentially. And giving it some more consistency and giving it that those, we're going to run it as long as you show up, we promise we'll run it. Versus hoping that people will show up. So, could it be done more? Yes, it could be done more, but there's, we don't have funding for that at the moment. You know, right now, our biggest constraint, as Mr. Perez pointed out, was that span of time. And the span of time really comes down to how much time we can have a driver and compel a driver to work. Because effectively, they drive up there, they wait with the bus, and then they have to come back. And we have to account, obviously, for the unpredictable travel times coming from the South Coast, getting to those difficult locations. So, you know, one solution could be doing it more days a week. One solution could be that we have that driver return in the afternoon. But both of those solutions come with a price tag. And while this is absolutely an important issue, I wouldn't say it's one of the highest priorities that we see when we're asked for more service. Now, the number one thing that people always ask for is Sunday service. I think Sabrina would say that hands down. You know, and from there, it kind of varies. And the connection to Providence seems to be something that people would really like to see. Maintaining our current pilot program connecting to Wareham is something that people would like to see. So, there are a lot of needs, and this is definitely one of them. And that's how we were able to come in, help out. Is it ideal? No, absolutely not. We recognize that. But without more resources, it's challenging for us to step up and say, yeah, we can, we can make that happen right away. Especially in an age when everything is getting boiled down to metrics and accountability and we're looking at the dollars per passenger that are spent. In the seventies, public transportation became subsidized by every government, municipality, state, and the feds across the board. But it was only looked at at the regions and the private carriers continue to operate that sort of inter-community transportation that we were talking about with Peter Pan. I don't have a crystal ball, but do I think that that'll last for the next fifty years? Probably not. But at the moment, there's a...
Hopefully, Commuter Rail will take care of that.
Commuter Rail may be the one that takes care of that. But again, what you're talking about then is also subsidized trips that the Commonwealth is paying for. So, I don't have an exact solution, other than to say that it can be done, but it does require more resources.
Do you see it being done relatively soon, or you just think it's not going to happen anytime soon?
If there's a will, there's a way, I would say.
Well, there's a will on our behalf.
But again, I think if you were to stack it against the other requests for service, it's going to fall below, like I said, that Sunday service, some evening services that we don't have, some morning services connecting to Stop and Shops, Distribution Facility, and Freetown. Sabrina may have some ideas, too.
Yes. Going back to that, I don't think Serta is the right place to go. Because if they would, if they have the funding, they would do it. Hands down, I've worked with them for a long, we've talked and worked together for a while now. And he wants to provide the services the community needs. It's a matter of the budget. So, part of that is, like, you have a really compelling story. Part of that is talking to representatives up in Boston. I don't know what part of Fall River you fall into.
Swansea.
Swansea, from Swansea? So, I'm not too familiar. Who would be your rep?
Well, I contacted my rep, but I haven't heard from her yet.
Had her done.
Had her done? Okay. So, maybe I can give you my card and we can work something out, right? But that's a very powerful motivator. I wish that I had met you before the budget happened.
Can I add something after you're done?
Yes. But, you know, personal stories like yours do motivate our legislator. That's your greatest, your greatest asset that I can see is, I can give an example of like when we did our sick time and paid family medical leave. We had somebody in a similar situation, only the person had passed. And you could hear a pin drop when the father and daughter spoke. So, it can make a difference. It's just...
Yeah, I'm sure Mr. Perez isn't the only individual that's in this situation. I'm sure there's plenty of other people that just haven't come forward.
Yes.
I want to ask something, if you don't mind. I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I have another issue with the Serta Bus Shuttle Service. First of all, I think that the bus service to Boston is a hidden germ. I think it's a great idea. I'm not casting stones at it. What I would like to see is to improve and enhance its services. I'm trying not to lose my train of thought here. Okay. I think that could be part of the solution to, well, anyway, let me get back. The other problem I have with the Serta Bus Service is that it picks up and drops off the patients on Cash Street, which is a parking lot. That parking lot has no shelter against inclement weather. Like, in the wintertime, when it's raining, snowing, windy, we have nowhere to go unless you have a car. And less than half the passengers, from my previous observations, don't have cars. They come walking to the Cash Street lot. And there's no restrooms. When you're a very ill person going to a hospital being treated, you oftentimes have sciaphets and you have a knee for a restroom. There's no restroom in the Cash Street. My recommendation is that you relocate the drop-off and the pick-up and drop-off of medical passengers to the bus terminal on Fourth Street, where they have all those accommodations available. And they have parking in their lower garage for anyone who wants to drive in. I drive in, but I can't use that service because my appointment is always a C, more than three hours. I can't use it. But I think it's a good service, simply needs to be, you know, improved, that's all.
Thank you.
And they need to publicize it more. I mean, this is the information that's provided through the Swansea Council on Aging. That's the information they provide about the days they provide a service and the hours. But I think there needs to be a greater effort to get public service announcements in the local newspapers and on the local radios to make the general population aware that this service is available. Because, like I said, it's a hidden germ. It's wonderful, but hardly anybody knows about it. I only found out because my social work thing.
Thank you. Is the pickup location something that could be looked at?
Certainly could be. Again, it's born out of the collaboration between the Southeastern Regional Transit Authority and all of our partnering COAs. And the concern, certainly with the Fourth Street bus garage, is that there really isn't that much space for other types of vans to come in or larger vehicles. Certainly, personal cars can come in and park underneath without too much trouble. But we don't, we don't allow any other vehicles other than our own, Peter Pan, and for a short time, Megabus, to come on to the parking platform up above. So, that's, the motivation came out of that, was that there was a large parking lot that allowed for multiple types of vehicles to all come and congregate at the same time.
Can I say something? Peter Pan has a bus that arrives at eight forty in the morning to pick up passengers to Boston. After that, they don't come, they don't use that particular parking space for about another three or four hours at least. I think there's plenty of time for the shuttle to park there, pick up the passengers, leave, and get to Boston before eleven.
I can help out. I can help out with that.
My name is Gloria Sadler. My home is at 318 Jink Street. My property happens to abut the Cash Street parking lot. And I'm the individual that makes sure the city is aware if it needs, the parking lot needs to be cleared of any debris or snow. So, my question for the council members and for Serta is, is it possible to provide shelter? I myself, until I watched this gentleman speak on television, as I watched the city council meeting, I believe it was about a week ago, was not aware that that very Cash Street parking lot was a pickup location. There's no signage. And I know that at one point, Kathy Viveras did have a sign erected at my request to the city because individuals were not clear that my street is a one-way street. So, they would cut through the Cash Street parking lot and go in the opposite direction. So, for me, knowing that the Cash Street parking lot is a pickup and drop-off location, I think for me, a city resident, that is perfect. It is perfect because it does have the ability to allow the various vehicles of various sizes to turn around or enter onto the Cash Street side and come out on the Jink Street side. But I myself, when I listened to this gentleman's testimony about a week ago, was concerned. I said, oh, my gosh, I never knew that this was a medical facility pickup location. There does need to be shelter. And that's something I think perhaps you can go into a dialogue and come up with the funding for that. My second concern would be the restroom facilities. I said, yeah, if I were an individual that was ill waiting for the pickup and I had to go, there's nowhere to go. So, if the shelter and the restroom could be addressed, I think those would be the least restrictive efforts for coming up with funding.
And may I say that the first time I called Fall River Taxi to drop me off at Cash Street, they couldn't find the location. And the taxi driver got in touch with headquarters, I guess they call it. Never heard of the service, didn't know what he was talking about. So, he had to take me back home. And I had to miss the appointment because they didn't know how to get there.
Are you going to find Cash Street on GPS?
Yeah, but he, like the lady said, there's no signs that shows where it's located.
Can I say this? It is a very well-hidden gem, that Cash Street parking lot. When I first purchased my property, the city was saying during a snowstorm, everyone should get off the street. And so, I said to my youngest son, because I have a parking lot, a driveway for two vehicles, but my son's vehicle would have been the third. So, I said, listen, the city said, get off the street, go park in the parking lot. He parks in the parking lot, and guess what? When it's time for him to get up and go to work in the morning, not a soul had driven into that parking lot to clear it. And I called the city, and the city said, we don't own that. So, it was not up until I owned my property that the city really acknowledged that they even owned that Cash Street parking lot. When the mayor, at the time, discovered, yes, we do own that, he immediately had trucks sent over to clear the parking lot. And thereafter, the parking lot has been cleared. But I have to say, that Cash Street parking lot is a hidden gem for the city.
Any other?
Just a couple of questions that have raised. I think that a lot of what has been raised is not going to be resolved tonight at this table. However, and I think the ideal thing, it seems like if there could be a satellite Serta sheltered bathroom facility location on Cash Street, that might be a solution. I think it would have to be expanded to include more than once-a-week travel from the parking lot, which I think is what it is now. It's just once a week that it travels from Cash Street.
Thursday morning. The pickup is at eight thirty in the morning.
So, I don't think economically it would be feasible to necessarily build a shelter with bathroom facilities for once-a-week travel. However, in the short run, just two questions. One issue seems to be the issue of having to leave Boston by two P.M. Is that something that could be looked at, to extend it and maybe get a three P.M. departure? Or even, I know if you leave at four P.M. out of Boston, you're going to end up in a three-hour transportation.
Nightmare.
Ms. Sadler and I drove to Cambridge the other day, and we took a couple of hours to get home, even leaving at about three thirty or three o'clock or so. But is there some possibility of extending the departure time out of Boston? And is that, is that a Serta vehicle that's leaving Boston at that time? So, is that something that the Serta Board could look at?
That's something that we could evaluate. But what it would mean is that we'd either leave earlier and have that driver return, and then send up another driver to then do the return trips. So, that, you know, potentially could add expenses, and that's what's been concerning about it. But could it be done? Yes.
Currently, your driver that gets there at ten, do they leave at ten? Arrives in Boston at ten. Do they stay there till two?
They stay there till two.
So, it's a four-hour layover?
Yep. Depending on what time they arrive. So, if they arrive at ten, then...
Is there a point at which it would not be a layover, like a five-hour layover or a six-hour?
We try very hard to make sure we bring home everybody that we bring up. So, even if somebody's delayed and we're able to keep in touch with them and we know that they're going to be riding, we try to make sure we get them. Our theory has always been, if we bring you out into the world, it's our responsibility to get you back. So, there are times where people have pushed that limit. But that does push up against what our drivers are able to do in terms of their DOT regulations and our contract, the bargaining agreement.
Would it be advisable for, rather than necessarily being the conduit to get connected to you, can Mr. Perez work directly with you or with someone in your staff to see about advancing this possibility?
Yep, absolutely.
So, have you ever been in touch with Mr. Rousseau, his staff? So, maybe before you leave today to make sure you get a contact, either with him or someone he designates to do that work? And then also, the other issue in the meantime, and the lacking of a Cash Street shelter and bathroom facility, is there a possibility of transferring that to the main bus terminal in Fall River on Fourth Street? And I assume there's a similar issue in New Bedford, right? Are you leaving from a parking lot in New Bedford? That's also not sheltered and not with a bathroom? Is that also true?
It's very similar setup.
Similar. So, I guess, not that I'm advocating for a New Bedford parallel, but is it possible that both buses could leave from the terminals in both Fall River and New Bedford so there's consistency? Is that something you can look at?
We can certainly look at it. But again, I know that it can be, it can present operating challenges because those facilities really don't accommodate vehicles that aren't used to being there, especially because of the way that the nature of this is set up, where it's not exclusively SRTA clients that are riding. And we're having clients from COAs and other entities that their vehicles coming in could present issues. That was our initial concern. But where we do, where we hold it, we can certainly be flexible. If there's another location other than the two that we've already talked about, we're open to that. Putting up a bus shelter at the Cash Street location is something we'd certainly be open to doing, provided that that would be welcomed there and there's the room for it. I can't speak to a bathroom, but I do have a bus shelter. I can't speak to a bathroom, but I do have a bus shelter that I can bring.
I do have an idea about that. I'm not saying it's the perfect solution, but what about a porter potty there? I mean, a porter potty, it's not like a full-service bathroom, but it's something, you know?
Yeah. It would be something to be considered. The reality, though, is that it's a once-a-week pickup spot.
Yeah.
So, it's not as if, you know, that porter potty is gonna get much usage unless the neighbors or the neighborhood discovers that it's something of usage for either appropriate use or inappropriate use, you know? But let me ask another question, because I had asked Nancy Munson, who is your counterpart, I guess, your co-chair on the...
Trish Robertson.
I'm sorry, what name do I say?
Trish Robertson at Bristol Alder Services is my co-chair, yeah.
Trish Robertson. And she's with Bristol Alder Services. So, is this an issue that the area agencies on aging are involved in? Do they provide transportation? Would you know anything about that, Mrs. Constantino?
They do provide some transportation. I'm not sure that they, I don't think it's that long distance. I think, I know they provide some taxi vouchers, I know they provide some local transportation. They don't actually have their own vehicles, so they refer to others. And I know, me and Trish, so I was actually, I pulled the microphone over, because I wanted to offer, so as my role, as a planner, I'm also mobility manager, so my role here is just education. So, what I do is I take SRTA's information and try to get it out to as many people as possible. And unfortunately, as you can see, it's not a one-size-fits-all. It's very much, when you interact with someone who has a transportation issue, you have, like, a million questions, because eligibility requirements, transportation are very weird. So, my first question for Mr. Perez was, what insurance do you have? Because sometimes insurance companies pay for transportation to Boston, even beyond mass health, some private transportation. So, getting that information out there is important. And I know that Trish has some money, some pots of money that she can provide transportation with. But again, it would be an eligibility as the person above a certain age or have a disability or, there's definitely, I'm willing to, absolutely, we can talk about it and provide you with some resources. I brought some actual flyers for the Boston Hospital Transportation with me that are on SRTA's website.
I could check with my insurance, but they don't provide it.
They don't provide it?
Can I just...
Sure.
Can I just interject for a second?
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm just listening to, you know, the possibility of shelter, and I think there should be shelters in many bus stops throughout the city, period. A lot of Duffield students take the buses in the morning in the south end, and there aren't a lot of shelters on a lot of their stops, and we should have a conversation about that. Up in Industrial Park, a lot of people take the buses to work, and on the way home, and there's no shelters up there either. And that's something that we should be looking at as well. But look at a place like Cass Street, and I know exactly where it is, and I know most people don't know where it is, but what if you were to change the location to say the Bristol Community College, where you have plenty of shelter, there's shelters there, you have plenty of, the buses go there during the day, it's one of the stops. Why wouldn't you pick that location rather than a location like Cass Street, where if someone didn't use to go to the bathroom, there are public bathrooms there in the buildings? So, that would alleviate a lot of the concerns that people have. I mean, you're talking shelter, you're talking bathrooms, you're talking congest, you know, an area where people can go, and there's plenty of parking for people that wanna park there. It is a community college, so it's not like it's, you know, private property. And I'm sure we could arrange something with the school up there, and that would be like a location that I think would be ideal for this type of service, to go in that direction. Is that something you've ever thought about, or anyone ever...
We'd be happy to explore that.
I think it's a perfect solution.
We're not married to the location. Again, it's just born out of the fact that we were working with the SCRA.
I mean, Cass Street works for people in that neighborhood, and it can walk to, like you said, most people don't have transportation, but someone could take the bus from downtown or anywhere to Bristol Community College, and then from there, make the connection to go up there, and you'd have plenty of room for turnaround, plenty of room for busing. They go there now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Shelters and bathrooms.
Yep.
And there's even a place you can get something to eat if you wanted to.
Yeah, we'd absolutely entertain that.
I think that's something that you should really look at and explore, because I think that's the solution, is go to a place like that, that has all the things that people are saying you should have. You're never gonna make the investment in the bathroom at Cass Street.
No.
And to put a bus stop, I mean, a shelter there, I think is a great idea. You should probably put one there anyways for people that, you know, are getting torn from their cars who just parked there. But I think you should look at the shelters and throughout the entire city and take a, you know, a good look at all that stuff. But in the meantime, quick solution to this, remove that location on Cass Street to a place like Bristol Community College, that you have bus access to, and there's plenty of parking and plenty of places that buses and anyone can turn around in. With that, I think I'm pretty much wrapped up. Unless Counselor Mr. Hager has anything he wants to add as far as veteran services to this, I mean, I don't know what else we can do, but I think this is, like my colleague says, something needs to continue for another day and keep going.
Not anything to this specific problem. In the veterans' community, we have our buses and shuttles, and we go to all the hospitals, so...
Okay. Thank you.
One other thing I've noticed, and I'll be very brief, is that passengers have to pay cash to use the shuttle. I mean, I don't know of other bus services except debit cards or anything like that.
The only other option that we have right now is you can buy tickets in advance.
Okay.
But yes, we don't have anything that would allow for you to use a credit card or anything like that at this point in time.
Yeah, that's not very common. Yeah.
It's not very, it's not common for public transit to have credit cards and stuff like that. It's just more complication.
I mean, it's very affordable, twenty-five dollars round trip.
Thank you. Any...
You know, just close, I think the community college idea raised by my colleague is a very good suggestion. I worked at the college for quite a few years, and I know that they are very oriented toward community. And if this is an issue that, that they can be a party to being supportive of, I think that they would be inclined to do that. And as my colleague noted, it's open very early in the morning, it's open till very late at night, and actually, Ms. Sadler was a former vice president with BCC, so she knows the college quite well. So, I think that was a great suggestion, and I hope that we can pursue that with great haste. If we can get out of Cass Street, that, I think, offers a good opportunity for a quick partial solution. And then possibly taking a look at the timeframe, or at least an open-ended kind of thing, that if someone has to stay till four-thirty or five o'clock, if your agency is able to accommodate a later departure, then that would be another valuable change in very, I'm seeing it as a relatively small change, but a change that could positively affect people that are adversely affected by this situation, so. And if you could just get back to us with any progress that's being made, so at least we're familiar with that through our city clerk, you know how to reach the Fall River City Council, so just get back to us as to progress that's being made toward this end. And certainly, Mr. Perez knows how to reach us as well, and we wanna try to help, not just him in this situation, but any Fall River resident in particular that are adversely affected by this situation, so. And I thank all of you for being responsive. Mr. Hig extended his day in order to be here, but fortunately, he does provide service, but for the limited population that he serves. So, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with the committee and the recommendation to find a location where it meets all the amenities that everybody needs. It's accessible for the passengers, the restrooms and the shelter, and it's a good place for the bus to come in and turn out. So, I think that's a great idea. And, I don't know, does the committee wish to table this and bring this back up when there's a resolution to this, or...
I think we could table it, in case we need to bring it back up, so it'll be here. And I forgot to mention, our chairman is also an employee, a Bristol Community College director of athletics, so. So, I think we've got some good, if you need any intervention at BCC between Ms. Sadler, Mr. Viveras, myself, and the president of BCC is, I think, very accommodating to these kinds of issues. I think we may have at least a partial solution to this problem. And Mr. Chairman, thank you for calling this meeting so quickly.
Sure. So, is there a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor?
Aye. The voice of reason strikes again.